Good evening. I'd like to call the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting to order
Recording in progress.
For October 10th, 2022. If I could have Commissioner Dodds do the Pledge of Allegiance and have everybody stand, please.
She and the board would like to be allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Planner, can you do a roll call, please?
Certainly. Chairman Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chairman Morrissey.
He let me know that he would be absent tonight.
Commissioner Obama.
Present.
Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Commissioner Dodds.
Present.
And Commissioner Simons.
Present.
Let the record show that five of the six planning commissioners are present. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. On the agenda, communications on matters not on tonight's agenda, I do not see anything But at this point, if somebody in the audience would like to come forward and speak to an item, or excuse me, speak to the commission on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to do that. Thank you. Seeing nobody come forward, then we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from our September 26th meeting. Commissioners, any edits or comments on that before I ask for a motion? All abstain from the vote this evening. I was not present, but I'll take a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, second?
I'll second.
And a second. I think we have an IT issue over here, so for this item, let's vote either aye or nay. I'll go ahead. I'm abstaining, Commissioner.
Aye.
Commissioner Simons. Commissioner Obama and...
I also have to abstain because I wasn't here.
And Commissioner Dodds.
Aye.
Chairman Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes 3-0 with Vice Chairman Rosales and Commissioner Obama abstaining.
Great, thank you. We'll give this a moment to reboot, but we won't lose any time moving on the agenda. Consent calendar, I don't see anything itemized for tonight's agenda nor anything under transportation items, so we'll go to our first public hearing item, which is consideration of a development plan and density bonus to allow a mixed-use project located at the southwest corner of Skylark Drive and Crouch Street. The applicant, the project name is Ocean Creek Mixed Use, located, like I said, at Skylark and Crouch Street. The applicant is JPI Real Estate Acquisitions LLC. We'll start with disclosures. My disclosure is staff report, know the area very well, used to live in Fire Mountain, driven by thousands of times probably. I, like most commissioners, probably got lots of emails, both in support and opposition to this, and I think that's it. Commissioner Custer?
I too have driven by a thousand times, read the reports, read the emails. I think that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Simons?
Staff report, drove by the site and then whatever email was forwarded to me from the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Obama?
All the same.
All the same, and also that I just, a lot of friends live in Fire Mountain. I just think it's one of the best neighborhoods in Oceanside, and interesting to hear what's going to happen.
And Commissioner Dodds?
Staff report, read quite a few emails, and I've been by the area several times.
Great, thank you. We'll start with the presentation by staff. Good evening, Ms. Revantes.
Good evening, Chair Rosales, Commissioners. Good evening, my name is Stephanie Revantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the Ocean Creek Mixed Use Development Project tonight. The project's site is located at the southwest corner of Skylark Drive and Crouch Street. The site is bounded by the North County Transit District Sprinter Station and Loma Alta Creek to the north, Crouch Street and undeveloped land to the east, Grandview Street and private residences to the south, and commercial properties of Union Plaza Court to the west. The site is approximately 18.9 acres, which includes vegetated slopes on the southern portion of the site. The development is proposed on a previously graded area of the site. Throughout the presentation, I will be referring to South Oceanside Boulevard, which runs parallel, and it is not the same street as Oceanside Boulevard. The site has a general land use designation of community commercial and open space, and has a zoning designation of community commercial and open space. The project is requesting approval of a mixed-use development plan to allow construction of 295 apartment units and 3,000 square feet of ground-level commercial. The application also includes a density bonus to supply parking with parking standards established under Density Bonus Law, and provides 30 low-income restricted units onsite. The unit's range and size and floor plan include studios, one, two, and three-bedroom options. The units including the reserved low-income units will be dispersed within five buildings, all of them four stories high. The site is designed with 476 parking spaces and private garages, carports, tandem, and open stall spaces. The project includes amenities such as a yoga studio, a fitness studio, a cardio room, a bike repair room, dog spa, outdoor dog park, a club room, an outdoor pool and spa, and a nature walk. There are currently no tenants identified for the commercial spaces, but they have been designed to include eating establishments and retail use. The project will have a total of two biological open space areas. The first is in the northern part of the property, which includes portions of Loma Alta Creek. The segment of the creek will be restored and monitored. The southern portion of the site will also be placed under an open space easement and includes enhancement and restoration. There will be an endowment set up to cover the maintenance in perpetuity. The project design also includes extending South Oceanside Boulevard, which runs parallel to Oceanside Boulevard. The extension includes demolition of the existing street and near coastal academy. The new street segment will connect Crouch Street to the existing commercial and industrial areas to the west. The project also includes a new left-hand turnpocket on Crouch Street to Oceanside Boulevard to allow vehicle traffic additional ways to reach Oceanside Boulevard. The project applicant will also be providing a number of off-site water infrastructure improvements. There is an existing 12-inch water main that runs through the site, which is proposed to be abandoned and replaced with off-site water main. The new water main is proposed to be located on South Oceanside Boulevard and will connect to the existing water line near Union Plaza Court. In order to ensure adequate water pressure to the existing Fire Mountain neighborhood, the project is conditioned to restore a 12-inch water main within the Cavalier Mobile Estates. The project requests a density bonus. This chart shows a summary of the affordable units provided onsite. The project applicant is providing 30 reserved units for low-income households, which is equal to 10% of all units onsite. By setting aside 10%, the project qualifies for up to 20% increase in total units above base density. The project is not taking advantage of this allowance. The application also does not request any incentives, concessions, or waivers of development However, the applicant is proposing to utilize the parking ratios prescribed in Density Bonus Law. This chart provides a summary of the parking ratios required per the zoning ordinance and Density Bonus Law and the proposed parking ratios of the project. The zoning ordinance would require this project to provide a total of 570 spaces. Density Bonus Law requires the project to provide a minimum of 374 parking spaces. The project has been designed with 476 parking spaces, 10 of which are available for commercial Staff finds that the project is in conformance with the general plan. The project provides additional rental housing stock within the city and is within a transit-oriented area that is served by nearby Sprinter line and local bus route. The project helps the city meet the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which estimates that the city will experience a demand of over 5,000 new units over the next eight years. The entire development is prohibited from short-term rentals, which will ensure that the units are available for long-term housing needs. The project also meets the Energy and Climate Action Element by encouraging future population and housing growth within an already urbanized area. The project is located within a smart growth opportunity area and is consistent with the Smart and Sustainable Corridors Plan that is currently being prepared as part of the city's general plan update. Project features such as the pedestrian connection and unbundled parking will increase transit ridership and in turn increase the quality and frequency of transit service. The project will also preserve and enhance the natural habitat in the area. The project has been designed to avoid and minimize impacts to Loma Alta Creek and the north-facing slopes. The impacts will be mitigated onsite in the form of restoration and enhancement with open space easements being placed over these areas. The project also provides economic benefit to the city. The project expands employment and housing within transit-oriented area. The project design also features right-sized parking, and the project is incorporating transportation and parking demand managements to reduce parking demand onsite. The project is designed to meet all development standards except the front yard setback requirement of 15 feet minimum. Section 3,046 of the zoning ordinance allows a mixed-use project to modify development standards if it demonstrates superior design. The project is proposing a front yard setback between one foot and 28 feet. The residential component of the project will have a minimum setback of six feet. Staff believes that the modified front yard setback is justified as the project incorporates outdoor gathering space and contains entrances adjacent to the sidewalk that create a better pedestrian experience. Here is an overall site plan of the project. This elevation shows the amenity and retail areas. This would be on your right-hand side as you enter the project from the main entrance. This is the front elevation and what a pedestrian or driver would see from South Oceanside Boulevard. And here is a rear elevation of the buildings. This is what you would see from within the project site. The project was required to comply with enhanced notification requirements and conducted two meetings in November of last year and February of this year. The detailed community outreach reports and all comments received by staff are attached to the staff report. The main concerns that were expressed were due to traffic, density in unit count, and sustainability. Many of the traffic concerns were regarding existing traffic within the Fire Mountain neighborhood. The project materials include a local transportation study that looked at the level of service under existing conditions, build-out year with the project. There were several intersections and street segments that were studied. The analysis found that 15% of all traffic trips will be using the Fire Mountain neighborhood. This does not constitute a significant increase in traffic. The applicant has also agreed to replace an existing signal pole on the northeast corner of Oceanside Boulevard and Crouch Street to improve traffic flows leaving the Fire Mountain neighborhood. The project is also proposing to replace sidewalk along Crouch Street from Skylark to Grandview, which will allow for a safer pedestrian travel from the existing neighborhood to Oceanside Boulevard. As previously mentioned, the project applicant is not taking advantage of increased density allowance under the Density Bonus Law. The applicant proposes to reserve 10% of total units onsite for low-income households and will assist the city in meeting future demands for dwelling units. There were a number of concerns regarding water supply, energy, and greenhouse gas emissions. The city is already aware and is planning for future growth within the urbanized corridors, and the city's 2020 urban water management plan shows that the city will meet all future water demands even as the state grows. The project applicant has also voluntarily provided for EV parking, permeable surface area, and tree canopy onsite. The project is also in a prime location to allow future residents to use transit, bike, and walking, and will reduce vehicle trips and greenhouse gas emissions. The project is subject to CEQA. A Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment was prepared for the project. The project identifies potential significant impacts related to biological resources, cultural resources, geology soils, and tribal cultural resources. The document outlines measures to reduce all impacts to a level below significant. The document was made available for public review from August 15 to September 15 of this year. The CEQA guidelines do not require that the responsible agency be respond to comments made on a CEQA document. However, a copy of all comments and appropriate responses have been attached to the staff report. No new significant impacts were identified. At this time, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution certifying the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and adopt a resolution approving the development plan and density bonus application with findings and conditions of approval. I am available for questions, and the applicant has also prepared a presentation for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I had one question for you. Regarding the traffic study that was done, I think it was referred to in your presentation, the local transportation study, how far, how broad was that? Was it just an intermediate area? Did it touch on, you know, we saw a lot of emails from residents in Fire Mountain. How far did that study extend? And is that how we came up with the number of additional trips through the Fire Mountain area?
Yeah, so the project looked at 11 intersections in close proximity to the project site, including South Oceanside Boulevard, Crouch Street, Grandview Street, Crouch Street, and Downstreet and California Street. And it also looked at several segments, including on Crouch Street, on Oceanside Boulevard, and on Skylark and Grandview Street as well. That's just a brief summary. It did include multiple different intersections and street segments as well.
Okay. Commissioner, any other Commissioner questions? I don't see anybody queuing in. Why don't we go to the applicant presentation? Maybe that'll spur some additional questions.
My name is William Morrison. I'm with JPI. Understand of about 20 minutes tonight. We use about 10 of that so we can get to questions and answers. So that sound about a good plan?
That sounds fine, thank you.
We're going to go over just JPI, who we are. We're going to go over the community outreach, which is an important part of this project. We'll go over the community benefits and then end with questions and answers, which I know we all want to get to. Does that sound like a good plan for tonight?
Perfect.
JPI, 33 years of quality home building, 25 years here in San Diego, celebrating our 25th anniversary, pretty excited about that. Wanted to go over a couple of projects we're building currently or just finished here in San Diego County. We have Jefferson La Mesa up in the upper right, Maker's Quarter, which is in downtown San Diego, and Maripacific Beach. All of these are transit-oriented developments like Ocean Creek. Tonight, I brought along some of my team members. I have Patty Bartlett, Santi Hujim, Seth Doros, and you probably can guess, a lot of the other blue shirts in the audience are with JPI. We're here to answer any questions later, as well as I brought along some of my technical staff, environmentalists, traffic, as well as architecture for later on. So we want to get into what Ocean Creek is and what we learned in the community outreach. So the current condition of the site is there's homelessness problem, which is one of the community concerns, and our neighbor just to the west, Classical Academy, is having some severe homelessness issues on their property. It's a fenced graded pad, and as many of you said tonight, you've driven by it many times. It's been a fenced graded pad for quite some time. And underutilized transit. The transit station really isn't utilized to its full potential. And in researching all this, the community really has a greater vision for this site itself. That vision's been detailed for the past 15 years, starting with the 2007 Oceanside Boulevard Vision Plan, where it asked for housing, retail, and this enhanced pedestrian experience that Stephanie mentioned earlier about a reduced setback. That's all landscape. Sanddome's gone over it several times. Oceanside Housing Element in 2013, the current general plan update. We've been a passive participant in that, listening in, and the community is pointing to that dirt lot next to the Crouch Street Station to put housing on, and that's been a continuous, continuous theme in all of that. And yes, we're in the Smart and Sustainable Corridor Plan as well. So we're going to get into our vision. We're creating a sense of place here, transit-oriented community, as Stephanie mentioned, 30 units of affordable onsite. We're at a lower density than what is expected, and we're extending South Oceanside Boulevard. We believe this is creating a community here, something that's missing, something that will revitalize this corner, the transit station in this area. This is what it looks like without the text box on it. You can see here, we have the retail anchoring both sides of the entrance, coming in from the transit station, really welcoming to the community, welcoming to the transit riders. We're expecting significant increase in transit riders from our project, as well as Classical Academy with their staff and students coming to the old county buildings. So again, we've created a better pedestrian experience here. We've actually widened the sidewalk to accept this additional traffic. Another slide we have is lovely rendering here at Crouch Street and South Oceanside Boulevard, further represents our pedestrian experience, well landscaped, using the wall of the building, so it's still inviting, no fencing, so it's really creating this community, this neighborhood. So we did a really robust community outreach process with the city and our staff. November 23rd, February 9th, we picked up a bunch of the people on a Zoom call that couldn't make it to the site on the 23rd. And then we felt that it was appropriate that all those people that participated on the 23rd and the 9th received an invitation from us to come talk about the documents that we submitted as part of this public review. We had a good dialogue with them and just created, you know, we're open and transparent. This is what they mean. Probably haven't heard of a CEQA before, so we had a great discussion with them. The November 23rd presentation, that was great. It was in the field, at the site. We were able to talk to the community, show them the site, like where markers were out there, and what we're improving and what we're not touching. Be able to say we're pushing the buildings towards the front of the street and staying away from the hillside, so the neighbors up in Fire Mountain don't have this mass up against the hill. Homelessness, existing traffic, density, and affordable housing. These were the themes of that meeting. Homelessness, we actually encountered that while we were onsite that day. This will revitalize the area. The additional eyes on the street will push away this undesirable activity and create a safer area, safer area for the transit, safer area for the community. We run a professionally managed community with 24-hour security and visibility. As the community is speaking up right now, there is an existing traffic problem out there. We did our analysis, and the analysis told us that we are not, I want to make sure I get this right, we are not creating any deficiencies at the intersections. So with that, we knew we needed to do more. That intersection down there where the sprinter crosses is a problem. Community saw what we were doing. A gentleman stood up and said, can you help me get onto your new South Oceanside Boulevard? We said, sure, what are you looking at? He's like, if I could just make a left turn off Crouch and avoid the backup of the sprinter and get further down South Oceanside Boulevard to get to the freeway there, that would be great. And actually, that's what's happening. We're creating, we're completing this missing link in transit. So this is actually a bypass for people backing up and going to Fire Mountain and going to Oceanside Boulevard. And we're hoping the Fire Mountain residents can now use South Oceanside Boulevard to better access the Oceanside Town and Country Center, because right now it's a pain to go all the way to Oceanside Boulevard over and back. So we're also putting in the local signal improvements, as Stephanie mentioned, and those improvements are not really required, but they will give the city a better ability to have the flow out of Crouch Street when the sprinter kind of backs up, and the city will be able to manage that. Density, the site is zoned at 29 to the acre. We have a density bonus application. Stephanie mentioned that we're not using it. That goes to 35 to the acre. We're delivering at 23 to the acre, and that's getting close to the median density numbers that the city uses when it talks about zoning. Affordable housing, that was a discussion in the field that day. The community said, what are you doing? We said, well, we're looking to pay for the in-lu fee so it could be focused where the city wants. And they said, why don't you make it part of your community? And we looked at it, and we, yes, we're making it part of the community. We're making the 30 affordable housing units onsite. As I mentioned, the February 9th was a follow-up to this meeting to catch the people on the Zoom call. Existing traffic was brought up again, density, affordable housing, and we came up with new concepts to talk about. What plants are you using out there? We had a dialogue with the community on that. We're looking at creating a plant palette that doesn't degrade Loma Alta Creek and treats this biodiversity that's happening down in that riparian area. One gentleman mentioned about hiring local. Well, we are our own general contractor, and we strive to hire local. We use the site itself as the center of the radius when we build out. We bid out, we bid to union and non-union shops. We don't discriminate. Loma Alta Creek, that's something Stephanie mentioned as well. I'm going to cover that a little bit later. And as you all know, the state is moving to full electric. So electrification is something that was brought up. Stephanie mentioned that we're doing 35 EV charging stations onsite. Then one of the other requirements is 50% solar, 50% generation. So we're doing 50% solar, but we're looking at it, it looks like it's achieving northward of 60% generation of what our plant, what our usage is. So we're looking to, we're looking to the future as we design the site. After all that, we're putting $80 million into the site itself, but there's a greater community benefit we want to discuss. Stephanie mentioned the water line replacement. Sometimes it's amazing to think if you do an improvement a mile away from your site, it helps the community two miles away from the site. So this water line improvement that's happening over in the mobile home park is actually improving the situation for our site as well as up on Fire Mountain. Traffic improvements, I already mentioned the signal, the turn lane, completing South Oceanside Boulevard, that missing link in the community. I wanted to focus a little bit on pedestrian and bike infrastructure. We are providing that widened pedestrian experience in front of our property with a wider sidewalk. We're putting in the proper bike infrastructure in South Oceanside Boulevard to create this better linkage. And Stephanie mentioned, we're creating that new sidewalk up to Palm Quest and Lincoln Middle. I'm out there, and I still see students walking through the transit center to go up there. So our students will be able to go up there as well. We're looking to generate about 84 students out of the project and the way the schools look that they can handle that additional load. Financial impact, it's a positive cash flow to the Oceanside General Fund. Permits and fees, we're paying in about $11.5 million in permits and fees that's going to the city and the school district. NCT Ridership will go up with our community there, as well as with Classical Academy coming in. We're providing the much-needed housing the community has, has a need for. We're providing affordable housing. And as a landscape architect, this is the last slide. I get to geek out here. So we're creating a human habitat when we build out the 295 units. Stephanie alluded to this, creating this habitat. I just want to go to it in a little more detail. I'm pretty excited creating habitat for plants and animals. In the upper top, she was saying, Loma Alta Creek, that blue area right up there, 600 linear feet along South Oceanside Boulevard, the extension we're putting in, we're doing an upland habitat enhancement. On the bottom, in the bottom area, the heavy darker area, that is an existing coastal sage scrub. That's in pretty good shape. We're pretty excited that's staying there. And the lighter green area is our mitigation area where we're enhancing. So what you're looking at is about 30% of our site is going to city open space. The best part is that blue area and that little green area, that is something we're creating an endowment to manage in perpetuity. I mean, that's something that we will be responsible for maintaining forever, that it stays as habitat, a quality habitat for the community. So again, we're here tonight to answer any of your questions. I have my staff as well, and my experts, and I want to turn it back over to Stephanie and staff for the rest of the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before Mr. Morrison leaves the dais? No? Go ahead, Commissioner Obama.
Is housing unaffordability, and it directly relates to the fact that we haven't built enough housing for the robust job growth our economy's created. Thank you very much, and we'll talk to you later.
Thank you. Next speaker. Certainly.
Hi, I'm Brandy. I live at the corner of California and Hunsacker. I've been here since high school, several years now, basically since the 70s. Good evening, everyone. As a longtime resident of Fire Mountain, we are asking the city and the planning commission to take into consideration the below objects to the proposed development and accordingly deny approval of the development plan D 20 dash 0004 and density bonus DB 22 dash 0004 regarding the Ocean Creek project, and further find that no exemption to CEQA applies. One, the project does not qualify for the benefits of the bonus density plan or the bonus density law. The proposed development does not qualify for the benefits of the bonus density law. The bonus density is a ruse to push through the development. The proposed development and project density is unlawful and inconsistent with land use plans. The proposed development is inconsistent with the neighborhood because it is too dense and will negatively impact traffic and noise. The proposed development violates the city's duty under the comprehensive zoning ordinance to protect the existing single-family residential homes from excessive noise, population density, and traffic congestion, which will result from the increase in population and traffic due to the multi-use, high-density development. The proposed development demotes and destroys the unique and positive attributes of the Fire Mountain neighborhood in violation of the city's land use element of the general plan. The proposed development demotes and destroys the rustic and rural nature of Fire Mountain, which the city has a duty to preserve and enhance pursuant to the city's land use element of the general plan. The proposed use density is not specifically allowed by Section 1.13H of the land use element of the general plan for Fire Mountain. The project is not exempt from CEQA. The increase in commercial use and residential living space at the project site will significantly and unreasonably increase population and traffic in the rural residential community. This will cause substantial environmental damage with increased population density, traffic, and noise. Allowing the project will result in a fraud upon the residents of Fire Mountains. We choose to live in Fire Mountain because of the unique rustic style, spacious lots, and its individual charm, which the city is duty-bound to preserve in accordance with the city's land use element of the general plan. Accordingly, high-density profit-driven product under the ruse of bonus density violates the reasonable expectations of all of the homeowners in Fire Mountain. Thank you. We look forward to a favorable response.
Thank you.
And next, our final three speakers. Again, if you will please come forward, state your name. You'll have three minutes to speak. Next up will be Ralph S. Next will be Jorge Varamontes, and final will be Diane Nygaard. Thank you.
Been a resident or in Fire Mountain area since 68, I believe. So we've all seen the changes. I went to the first meeting down by the development site, listened to several knowledgeable people there that are traffic engineers and so on. And one of the things that came out of that kind of surprised me was that when it came to the road system, what could be done? Basically, nothing. Nothing can be done with Crouch, Skylark, Oceanside Boulevard. I guess the new road in the frontage era is called South Oceanside Boulevard. I'm not sure. But basically, it was a real problem. And what so I, from what I saw tonight, we've got some turnouts, we've got some widening, we've got some things done, but nothing to uncork the traffic. Now, we're going to punch the road all the way through. We punch the road through. We now have two exits on the other end, one right next to the freeway and one out towards I'm trying to think, oh, I can't think what's on the corner. But we have two exits there that we've added to alleviate traffic. Well, those two exits, you can't line cars up behind them. They're very cramped. So we still have a corks on one end, Crouch Street, cork on the other end, and all this traffic. It's definitely going to be forced through Fire Mountain, but at the same time, we're talking about people with jobs, homes. Where are you going to, hey, I got to go to work. I'm going down that way or that way. I'm going to be on Oceanside Boulevard. Just recently, I got to speed up here. Just recently, they did some work on the freeway. I went down that road because I deal with businesses all up and down there. I went down that road and it, three lights get through. One lane was blocked off. But that's kind of showing us what's going to happen. The housing's being built all the way out to Vista and all the new apartments. That's their business. But traffic is going to get only worse now with the number of cars we're talking about going through. It's going to, I'm going to guess, I can't validate this, but it's going to be gridlocked. How, how many lights is it going to be take to get through there? Was there ever, and I don't think feasibly it's possible to do it as far as costs go, but nothing was going to be done with the freeway. The freeway is the ultimate bottleneck. So is Oceanside Boulevard itself. So is Skylark and Crouch. Was that my buzzer there?
That was, but I'll give you a few more seconds to wrap up.
Oh, that's okay. Anyway, a tremendous traffic problem. And so that's what I was hoping would get solved.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Two more speakers. I think your name's been called. Here you go.
Chair Commissioners, good afternoon. My name's Jorge Varamontes, and I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the local area, work and recreate in this vicinity, believe that I will be impacted by environmental impacts of this project. The city should require the project to be built with contractors that will hire local, pay prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from state-certified apprenticeship programs. Workforce requirements reduces construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In the recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030," the California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that the local hire requirements can result in air-proluded reduction. Other cities have not hesitated to apply workforce requirements for private development projects in their city. For example, the city in Hayward in Northern California adopted workforce requirements into its general plan in municipal. The project is ineligible to be evaluated under CEQA under Sustainable Communities Environment Assessment, since CEQA requires that in order to use an SCEA, the proposed project must provide a minimum net density of at least 20 dwelling units per acre. Therefore, the project's impacts cannot be evaluated using a streamlined process. An actual environment impact report must be prepared. Specifically, the area is 27.8 acres minus the 4.6 acres that's undeveloped, leaves a total development area of 23.2 acres. Therefore, 295 dwelling units divided by the developed acreage results in a density of 12.7 units per acre. This is well below the 20 units per acre threshold. The project description is inconsistent regarding the project's area and the project density. An environmental impact report should be prepared because the light and glare impacts on endangered wildlife and not properly evaluated and mitigated. For example, the document does not even mention the sensitive use, endangerment species, and wildlife that would be affected by the project's impacts on the dark skies, especially on the project undeveloped areas. Thank you, Commissioners. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Diane Nygaard representing Preserve Calavera. There are some huge differences between this project and Ocean Breeze, both along the Oceanside Boulevard Smart Growth Corridor and both using density bonus law. But this one did not take the units to the max. It's added some unique features like unbundled parking to reduce their impacts. It's not building a single monolithic structure that does not fit with the community. So while there are a lot of good things that can be said about the project, we still have concerns about it, two of which we're asking you to address tonight, a third one that we need staff and developers and you to continue to work on, and that's building electrification. These buildings will be getting about 40% of their energy from natural gas. Our city voted to join the CCE in 2024. That's the single largest action we're taking to reduce our community-wide greenhouse gases. But we won't achieve the benefits of that if we continue to allow gas hookup. So we hope that this project, as it moves to final design, that both the developer and city will work to reduce the amount of natural gas. Our written comments earlier today identify two key conditions we're asking you to add to the project here tonight. San Diego County has already lost 95% of its historic wetlands, and the few we have left continue to die slowly. We call it death by a thousand little cuts. This project is adding hundreds of people with all of their cars and pets right next to the buffer to our already impaired Loma Alta Creek. Every development next to sensitive lands like this needs to direct the indirect impacts they cause. Trash, road control, cats killing birds, creating illegal trails. These edge effect conditions are supposed to be routinely included in every project next to sensitive habitat. And I can tell you 10 years ago in the city of Oceanside, that was routinely done, and somehow we've gotten away from that. We need to get back to that. A second request is to require a TDM plan. You heard from many neighbors concerned about traffic and the small number of parking spaces, and paying fair share fees for traffic improvements does nothing to reduce the impact from projects like this along Oceanside Boulevard, not until they're actually built, which could be years from now. But a TDM plan could help from day one. It could include things like inform residents about the new pilot project NCTD is doing that allows under 18-year-olds to ride free. The city set a precedent for such a TDM plan with the Mission Co. project. This is another one where we have traffic failures and neighborhood impacts. A TDM plan gives a developer flexibility, and it can change over time as conditions change. Please add these two conditions. Let's make sure this project is a good fit with our community and with the creek that will be its neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nygaard.
That concludes our speakers. Chair and Resales.
Thank you. We've run out of speaker slips, but again, we welcome anybody who did not turn in a slip to come forward before we close the public hearing.
Hello, and my name's Todd Quinn. I'm a resident here in Oceanside. I want to welcome the JPI and construction group here. I'm learning all about that I can on these large projects as we're seeing large projects going into the downtown area. I'm here to speak about the bicycle infrastructure that you're planning. I believe I'm trying to meet these large projects halfway by understanding how to get the people moving outside of their car. I believe we're all concerned about the traffic because it has to do with the cars that we drive. So some of the projects we've worked on with the hotel, we've asked for simply a bicycle, we asked for the bicycle racks. Upon the hotel coming in, they did not install the bicycle racks. So how do people ride their bikes to work if there's no place to park their bike? So when a developer is promising a bicycle infrastructure, I would love to know about what specifics you're referring to. It really matters because nowhere in the images that you showed tonight, nowhere was a bicycle lane. It's something that I'm concerned with, and I'm here to learn more about it, and I appreciate this room and all of the passionate people that are here tonight, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come forward? Give us your name.
Thank you. Ian Winfield. I'm a resident of Fire Mountain on Faith Circle. I've only been there for about three years, but really enjoy the neighborhood. We moved there, excuse me. My wife and I moved there to start our family. We have a two-year-old son and another one coming next year. I stand in opposition of this development project in alignment with my fellow neighbors. I drove through that intersection to get here. It's already congested, and I think it's pretty clear that this is going to make it significantly more congested, create a significant larger amount of traffic volume through the area that is just not really designed to sustain. And so I think that has a lot of other secondary impacts on the environment and the local safety of our residents and our children that are also walking to those schools multiple times a day. So I think that's a pretty big concern for us. And I'm a little bit skeptical of the 15% number that I saw. I mean, the reality is if those units are in Fire Mountain, unless you're driving to somewhere else in Fire Mountain, 100% of those cars are going in or out of Fire Mountain. I think that's just going to be a really big problem for the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Come on forward. Bring the mic down if you need to.
I'm Kelly O'Neil, and I apologize I missed the first part of the meeting. However, I oppose the project also. I grew up in Oceanside, and I've seen what that neighborhood has been turning into, and I own property there. And I, first, you guys want to put a checkcashing place in our neighborhood. You move a, what's that clinic? The methadone clinic down there. People are lined up on Apple Street, using the restroom outdoors, doing all kinds of things outdoors. And a woman whose primary residence is in La Jolla, she's allowed to rent that place out to a methadone clinic, but that's not her neighborhood. And then the whole checkcashing place. And then also, I noticed the JPI Realty, I believe, I may be wrong, but they're the ones who are the developers there doing these kind of developments in Inglewood, San Diego. But I notice in San Diego, they're turning one of their buildings into a homeless shelter. So that's one of my concerns, too. It's like, I don't want those places rented out to homeless people. We have children walking up and down to and from school, and we have a major fentanyl problem in this city, and we still haven't figured out what that's about. I think we need to address these issues before we just put up a bunch of apartments where the people aren't going to own the land or they're not going to really care about that neighborhood. I would like to see people, those parcels, that turned into parcels where people can own the land. And that land is also, it turns into an estuary, just like how, where you put the Fresh and Easy on top of Vine Street in Oceanside Boulevard. That was an estuary that we went to in high school. Our high school teachers used to take us there to go see the wildlife. And so I don't want to, I feel dishonesty coming from the city a lot about, they're so concerned about the environment, when you just plop a store on top of an estuary. So there's that, and then, you know, there's other things, too, but I'll wait for the next meeting, and I hope there's another meeting. Wait, I have 17 seconds, so. Also, I've noticed, working with city engineers, they want money from locals to get, they want $1,000 here, $10,000 donated to their favorite charity. That's what they tell us as locals before our projects go through for our own homes, but for what, city planners from Texas, these JPIs from Texas, they get to come in and just do whatever they want. How much money did they give you guys? That's what I want to know.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Nelson. I live up on Dunston Street and have lived there for about 27 years. I'm a retired Marine invested in the Oceanside community. I'm a retired school principal, K-8 school. I've been here a long time. I love Fire Mountain, and what you're proposing to do will completely change the character of that community. A couple of things. On this, one of the slides, it said something about one of the benefits of this community was going to be addressing homelessness. I would like to know where, in any literature, it states that high-density housing improves a homelessness situation. If somebody could show me that, I would really like to have that. I also, I also would like to know, you know, underneath that same portion of the homelessness part, it talked about how community is going to improve, that this, that this community that will develop in the housing among the residents is somehow going to affect the homelessness situation. Please show me where there's anything that shows, we're a community, Fire Mountain is a community. We haven't been able, we have not, despite our, despite our very best efforts and all of the work that we do ourselves to help with the homelessness, that does not help that problem. It is a terrible problem, not one that is going to be solved by high-density housing. The other thing is, so I kind of resent that being on that slide. I almost felt like an emotional thing was being set before me to try to get me to somehow look more favorably on this project. The other thing is that Downstreet, we've already, we just had traffic approved, traffic calming measures for Fire Mountain because the traffic is already so bad. And that's without this. Downstreet is going to become a, you're going to have to install traffic lights on Downstreet because the people who live there are not going to be able to get in and out of their own homes. It's already a very, very busy, busy street. So I would ask you to look, take seriously, I'm hoping this is not a done deal and this is just appeasement for, you know, we're being appeased by being allowed to speak. These are real issues that affect real people who have sacrificed to build the community that Fire Mountain is. I mean, we, it just didn't happen. We worked at being a community, and this is going to have a negative impact on the community that's there. I, it's not that I'm against high-density housing, it's just the wrong project in the wrong place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Smith. I live in Fire Mountain. I have for about 20 years, and I learned a lot from, about JPI this evening and appreciate their presentation. I've also, it's become quite apparent, there are some unresolved issues, namely, traffic being the number one unresolved issue. An additional turn lane on Crouch does not resolve the problem. Currently, as the other gentleman said, there is a problem. I also passed through Crouch and Downs and Oceanside to get here, and I think we sat through the light twice, and there was no train coming through. So my major concern is traffic, and I think it's apparent that that situation has not yet been adequately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call for anybody to come forward and before we close the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for Comments, Discussion. Before we do that, and the applicant still has, by my account, about nine minutes left on their presentation to answer any questions, I guess I'll just ask a general question, City Planner, about, or Ms. Varamontes, about traffic. Obviously, that, to me, seems to be the recurring theme and concern. We read the staff report, and it touches on traffic and, of course, the environmental documentation, review traffic. You heard the commentary, though, did, is there anything that was overlooked, but that's the wrong word, but maybe just, I'll leave it there. Can we talk about traffic and the concerns that were raised, and how this project will or may impact Fire Mountain, and how the traffic study took all of that into account? So sort of broadly, just talk about traffic, and maybe that'll spur some additional questions.
Chair and Resales, Commissioners. Yeah, so as was mentioned in the presentation, the project did submit a local transportation study. Staff actually worked with the applicant to update that study, provide additional information, additional counts in response to many of the concerns that we heard from the community. So the final product is not what was originally submitted. We added additional intersections, additional street segments because we heard from the community that they wanted additional information. So that's the final one that you have in front of you, is work that we did with the applicant to address those traffic concerns and have more information. And I also have our, Tila from our Transportation Department here, she might be able to provide more information, and the applicant also has their, the author of that study here in the audience as well.
Okay. Tila, if you wouldn't mind coming down, and we'll start with you, and then we will go to the consultant after that.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tila Carter, the City Traffic Engineer. There was, I know there's a lot of things said about traffic, putting, there was counts that were done, and it was actually on the traffic side of things, not necessarily with this study in terms of some volumes and some speeds. We did this mainly because, if you are aware, we got some money from Measure X for a traffic calming program. And with that, we are trying to address traffic calming requests within the city. There are multiple requests. We're working down the list, you know, checking down the list that we have of over 400 requests over the last 11 years. At the top, near the top, were some locations within Fire Mountain. And I'm not sure how many of the people here behind me from Fire Mountain are aware. I'm guessing there are a few that are. A petition actually has been sent out to Fire Mountain, to residents north and south of Fire Mountain Drive for traffic calming devices. And so, and so basically, right now, from what I am understanding, is a petition has met its quota for streets south of Fire Mountain, yeah, Fire Mountain Drive, to have traffic calming devices installed on Ivy, Avocado, and Laurel Street. And then also, north of Fire Mountain, they are in the process of getting their petitions, the required amount assigned in support of the traffic calming. And that would be putting traffic calming devices, if I remember correctly, on Avocado, Laurel, and Downstreet. And the portion on Downstreet's only between Fire Mountain and California. So that's what we have in terms of addressing that, and that is separate ideally from this project, but we know that, you know, it will address some of those concerns that people wanting traffic calming within the neighborhood. And then there were some counts done at the intersections, and then like on Ivy, south of Fire Mountain, there was 729 vehicles currently. And Avocado, north of Fire Mountain, was 1,800 vehicles. And Laurel, south of Fire Mountain, was around 1,500 vehicles. So hopefully, I answered some questions on that one.
Yeah, and just to be clear, if I understand it correctly, traffic calming helps slow traffic down. It doesn't mean less traffic.
True.
But, but it's a strategy to maybe, maybe at some percentage, to deter somebody from going through there in the first place because they know they have to go slower, in theory, anyway. Is that, do I have that right?
It can be known to deter traffic as well.
Okay. Chairman Resales. Excuse me. Excuse me. Ma'am, excuse me. The public hearing is closed. If you would be, please, ma'am. Ma'am, this isn't a back-and-forth discussion between you and I. Thank you.
Chairman Resales, I want to add, you know, all these measures that Ms. Carter described aren't related to the project. That's not what we're analyzing and considering tonight. These are things that are above and beyond that the city is doing to address an existing issue, not related to this project.
Exactly. Thank you. Any question, Commissioner Obama?
Yes, I have a, I have a question for, probably for the
Yes, I have a question for, probably for the applicant, and I think that they could probably answer it. We had one of our citizens, Mr. Quinn, had brought up the bikes, which this project, being as close as it is to the mass transit with the Sprinter and everything, and then also with the new electric bikes kind of going crazy. I know you have a bike café that's proposed in your project, so maybe you can kind of tell our, you know, tell all of us a little bit more, what you're thinking about bikes in this project.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that opportunity. For inside the project, we have the bike café, which is a place for people to come pick their bikes, because people don't want to do that out on the sidewalk or within their apartments. So we're providing this opportunity for this. We're finding, we're also doing a bike-share program where we will have bikes to allow residents to ride to the beach and such. And one of the other infrastructure pieces is, when I mentioned that, we talked about the width of the road, and we worked extensively with Tila about what the road segment looks like in front of our building. We're going to put in the sharrows on the section of our road because the road segments don't match up when we get to South Oceanside Boulevard. As Stephanie mentioned, we have no parking due to the biological setback, so if we did a bike lane, they would have to stop and jog around the cars that are currently parked on that section of South Oceanside Boulevard. So the sharrow solution was the solution that seemed like you would be able, see you'd be able to carry it on down South Oceanside Boulevard. We don't have a lot of bike racks on our projects right now. A lot of our projects, we do have bike storage within the buildings themselves. We don't have that planned right now. We have a lot of tuck-under garage parking where people could store their bikes. The mention of e-bikes, a lot of people don't like locking up a $3,000 bike outside, you know, and pulling the battery. So we're finding that a lot of our residents put them inside their apartments or on their balconies. Is that sufficient?
Well, you mentioned bike racks. I know that with the retail part of your project, I mean, a few bike racks is not that much to ask, right?
Not a problem.
Mr. Morrison, if I could have your traffic consultant come up and we'll continue our traffic discussion.
Yes, Chair. We have Justin from Urban Systems, who we spent a lot of time doing this traffic analysis, and I know a lot of back-and-forth with Tam and Tila, and it was very fruitful.
For the record, if you give us your name, please.
Yes, my name is Justin Slafly. I'm with Urban Systems Associates.
Justin, thank you.
And I'm a licensed traffic engineer.
I don't have a specific question, but you certainly have heard all the questions or comments about the traffic and Tila's commentary about the traffic-calming separate from this project in the neighborhood surrounding this, but can you add some values or commentary to what you heard here this evening?
Sure. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We did dig in and look at quite a few intersections in the area, including intersections in the neighborhood. And city staff was very proactive in asking us to go that extra mile to study even more intersections than we otherwise would normally look at, just based off of the volume of traffic that we expect to be in the neighborhood. So you did hear approximately 15% of the project traffic is expected in the Fire Mountain neighborhood. That's just over 300 vehicles per day, so that falls below most study thresholds. However, we did look at several intersections and street segments, as mentioned. And of those, we found a very good peak hour level of service at the intersections. Street segments operated well within capacity, so we didn't anticipate a problem within the neighborhood. In fact, most of the traffic, and I think everyone in the neighborhood and in the city knows, is concentrated on Oceanside Boulevard, which will need improvements in the future. The city has planned for those. The project will be participating in those improvements. Another kind of unique aspect of this project is that we are completing a needed roadway segment. So that's going to redistribute some of the traffic on Oceanside Boulevard. And today, traffic which has to go out of direction or might impact intersections on Oceanside Boulevard can now bypass and use South Oceanside Boulevard in front of the project to travel over to the freeway and bypass Oceanside Boulevard. So that should have a secondary.
If I could get you to pause there just a second, because I wanted to touch on that, sorry to interrupt you.
No problem.
I think I heard a comment from somebody in the audience, and I had the same thought. And thank you for, as part of the project, for making that extension happen. But I too thought, those are very tight little exits out those two that would then be joined with that improvement. How did you study, or did you study, that impact if folks are going out those two exits and what that might do to traffic that exists in those two exits right now?
The exits from the project onto South Oceanside?
The exits from the portion of South Oceanside Boulevard that doesn't have that connection to this project now. There are two exits closer to the freeway. And if we now invite traffic from this project going through that now-improved roadway, two signals down there on the west side, if you will?
So we did look at those signals, as you can see on the map on the overhead. So we looked at those locations as well, and we found that they would operate within capacity even with the redistributed trips. So we did a Sandag model for the project. We added the road connection. We added the project traffic. We projected out 20 years, and we added growth from all known other projects in the area, as well as growth projections from Sandag. And that's how we modeled it, and we modeled those intersections and studied them, as well as street segments, and found, again, that they were within the level of service targets the city has established.
Okay. Go ahead, sorry to disrupt your previous comments.
No problem. So, we did, as I mentioned, look into the neighborhood, and the 15% that we talk about that's going on Crouch Street and Downstreet, that is not a number that I came up with, that's a number from Sandag. So when we go and do these studies so that we have a consistent standard in projecting traffic and distributing traffic, we use Sandag to run that model, and it goes through iterations of origin and destination and different trip types and whatnot, and it matches trips up from the project into the community. And so the Sandag model predicted the 15%, and that's where that number came from. Obviously, there's a bit of a cut-through concern within the community, and I understand that's being looked at in combination with traffic-calming measures, which is obviously a wonderful way of handling that.
Thank you. Any questions for the consultant before we move forward? Thank you. One question here.
I mean, you're talking about the Sandag model, and you're talking about, you know, hey, this is how we're going to pick the 15%. But I think what the residents are pointing to is you're not accurately predicting the demand that's going to come from the draw that is the Walmart, the State or Brothers. Everything these folks need is there. Like, the normal grocery store, you know what I'm saying? Like, the things that are going to draw the residents of this community are going to draw them right through their neighborhood. And that's true, whether your model predicted it or not. And I think there might be some inaccuracy with how the demand is drawn, because it's a model. That's all it is, right? It has to be calibrated to effects on the ground. So did you adjust the model at all to compensate for this demand that they're talking about?
So yes, Sandag extensively calibrates the model using account database of most major streets citywide. And so they go through an extensive calibration process in creating the model. They also reach out to every agency and get land use plans, find out where retail is, for example, schools are, where residential is to be located. And all of that factors into the model in determining origin and destination and distribution. So it was calibrated.
Do you, as the engineer, do you do the model? Or do you, is this outsourced to Sandag, and then they do the model and you get the results back?
Sandag does the model and we get the results. And that way, it says, it's taking into account all of the regional data and the extensive data sets that Sandag has that I don't have access to.
Correct. Like any model, like the hydraulic model, for example, for the city, it has to be tweaked for the specific conditions. So you get a model, but how do they account for, this is a local peculiarity here because of the way that the stores are, just happen to be, there's, we all have this vision of Oceanside Boulevard when it's fully developed, right? You have the Sprinter, you have these walkable communities, everything is fully developed. But it's not there now. What is there now is when this gets built, everyone's going to go through that neighborhood to get onto 78 or to get over to where the shopping is and to get to their stuff. So that is a valid concern, and my question is, what have we done? And traffic-calming only slows the amount of traffic that goes through the neighborhood. So I think as we develop these corridors, there has to be some consideration to, I mean, one thing if it's Rancho Delore, right? We've identified this as a major corridor that we're going to fully start to expand and to kind of handle this growth. Same thing with Oceanside Boulevard. But these neighborhoods, are we willing to sacrifice them to the traffic that we're pushing through? This is the pushback we're seeing, but there's an equivalent neighborhood on the other side that's getting a pull over to 76. So it's just something that we have to consider when these projects are coming through, that it's not just a model, right? These are neighborhoods that are out there that we really do need to think about.
Yeah. A model is certainly a tool, but Sandag does extensive data collection, so they do actual travel surveys and have actual residents and workers in the city fill out travel surveys. Most recently, they did it with a phone application. They tracked them. With their permission, they provided that data to Sandag to calibrate their model. So it is pretty well calibrated, including for local conditions, and then it's double-checked against actual counts to see if the predictive result of the model matches the reality on the ground. So they do a calibration effort first, and then they build on top of that. So, that's how that process works, and it is kind of a level playing field, so it's not just somebody saying, I think the number is this or that. Regardless, we did, as mentioned, look at several of the intersections, and they're operating, several of the intersections, for example, Skylark and Down is operating a Level Service B. Down and California Street is operating a Level Service A. So even if the projections are off by a bit, that's, let's say it's 30% instead of 15%. That's not going to drive those intersections to a failing level of service. We're seeing very good levels of service and sufficient capacity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that's all we have for right now. I'll just keep going with what I wrote down here in terms of comments I heard. So, Ms. Nygaard addressed, and the City Planner, maybe this is for you or Stephanie, addressed three things: electric versus gas, and then TDM and protection of Loma Alta. I guess maybe those last two, TDM and protection of Loma Alta, was touched upon in the environmental documentation, or addressed, I should say.
Chair Vasquez, Commissioners. The project is conditioned to provide a Habitat Restoration Plan prior to occupancy that is a requirement in order for them to obtain their state and federal permitting for what they're going to be doing on-site in those areas, so that is a requirement. And they are also conditioned to provide a detailed transportation demand plan prior to occupancy as well. We do have a draft that staff reviewed. In that draft, essentially, it's a conceptual plan for the project. It includes the bike-share program, transit pass subsidies, new resident information packets to give them information of transit options, and it also includes an on-site TDM coordinator. So, prior to occupancy, the project will be required to provide a more detailed version of that plan, but we do have the conceptual draft that staff has reviewed.
Great, thank you.
Chair Rosales, I'll add also that the TDM, it's a voluntary program for this project. It's not a mandate or a requirement, and this project has agreed to that condition to implement such a plan.
Great, thank you. Okay, I guess I'll just continue, and these are, go ahead, Commissioner Downs.
I did have one question, since we were off the traffic for the moment. In nothing that I read, did I see anything for provisions for solar power or any type of clean energy? Is there a provision for that?
The project will be providing solar on-site. They are required to meet California Building Code, which does have some requirements for solar, but they're also voluntarily providing additional solar on-site.
Ms. Nygaard also addressed the fact that we, this commission, heard of another project, what was it, three, four weeks ago, Ocean Breeze, that was highly unpopular with this body. And this project, and it was also a density bonus project. This one is not far down the street and is similar in terms of the density bonus and the other elements that the city is pushing forward, in fact that it's within the sustainable corridors and so forth. So this one is remarkably different than that one. So, this one checks a lot of boxes, and I know it's going to be quite a different feel in that area for the residents who live in Fire Mountain, most certainly. Those things were addressed, a number of things were addressed in the evaluation of this project, including the one that we heard most about, and that is traffic. So, I don't know if my other commissioners have thoughts or any further questions. I see my screen is blank, but, yeah, I understand residents that spoke this evening and all the emails we got. I too, if I lived still in that neighborhood, would probably not be too keen on seeing this project change possibly the character of my neighborhood. But again, this project does tick off a lot of the boxes that the city is looking to see happen.
People watch boxes.
Thank you, ma'am. Housing needs, close-to-transportation corridors, and so with that, again, I don't see any other commissioners with any questions or comments, so.
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ballmer.
You brought up the Breeze luxury apartments that we talked about, a couple of planning commissions now, and this one is quite different than the Breeze. I mean, on the other one, they went all the way to the limit with how many units they could provide on that site, whereas this one backed it off. They didn't go to the max. They actually respected the community and went down on it, which I thought that was pretty commendable. They're right next to the transit station, which is on every model we have in the city with all of our studies we've been doing. That's all about what we've been trying to get, is density next to the transit stations. And so here we have a project that didn't go to the max, that actually kind of scaled it back, and they're providing houses and also affordable houses in the same area, which is another commendable thing. They're not using the, in Luffy, they're going to go ahead and build those houses, which I thought that's another good thing. And as far as homeless goes, it will clean up the homeless issue, because the more people you have, the more eyes you have around the community, it does help. Yes, it does, people. You just have to give it a chance. That area is really bad right now. I can't believe how much property.
Please.
It will help.
Excuse me.
It will help. And I think it's also commendable that.
Excuse me, please.
60% of the electrical generation will come from on-site, which is another amazing thing. So, they're doing a lot of, and then the open space, I thought that was pretty, really kind of nice as far as this project goes, is that they have a really great open space area, they're going to provide a trail system, they're going to enhance the trail system, they're going to keep that in perpetuity, they're going to keep that good. The Loma Alta Creek, they've addressed the Loma Alta Creek and trying to help and perfect that and address that, which a lot of properties along the way have not, and this place at least is going to recognize it and make it better. So, there's a lot of things that are good with this project that we didn't have in the last density bonus project. And one of the neighbors brought up the fact that density bonus is a law.
Ma'am, please, would you keep your commentary to yourself?
You can't do this, but density bonus comes down from Sacramento, people. This is what your people that you voted for have come up with, and this is what our city, as well as every other city in California, have to live with now, is density bonus. So if you don't like the laws, then when you vote, you got to think about how you vote, right? So this is not something the city came up with, this is something that Sacramento came up with. This is the law, this is the way it is. So, we're stuck with it. And I'm really happy to hear about the city's reaction to the neighborhood, because I love Fire Mountain, too, and all the traffic calming that's happening out there. I think that's going to be great, it's going to help the people slow down. We live in an area, too, that has a lot of cut-throughs, and all we do is, all we can do ourselves that live there is slow ourselves down, and hopefully the people behind us will get pissed and go another way. So, the traffic calming will help. It's going to help. I wish we had that in our neighborhood. So, anyway, I pretty much personally support this project, so I think this is going to be a great project for our housing, and I would vote for it.
Commissioner Custer?
I would just like to agree with what Commissioner Ballmer just said, and basically, it does come down to Sacramento. And it does come down to, we have no local choice the way we would have years ago before these laws were put in place. And I don't think, I mean, personally, I don't like it any better than anyone else, but we have to pay attention to who we vote for if we want to change this. Thank you.
Go back to pick your balance.
Thank you. You just won't give up, will you, ma'am? Commissioner Simon? Commissioner Simons?
Okay, from a density bonus perspective, this project, it really is not a density bonus project. Yes, they're taking the density bonus, but they only did that instead of paying the In-Lu fee, which was in response to what people had asked for. So I don't think that this is necessarily something that is foisted upon us. I disagree with that with this particular project. And me personally, I feel like the project meets all the requirements of everything that we want to do in the city and the corridor. But we have to pay more attention to the adjacent communities. And I don't think we're addressing the significant impacts that are there for this particular neighborhood. And this is a problem that's going to repeat itself the entirety of Oceanside Boulevard as we move forward on some of these corridors. So I think that we need to pay more attention in the planning process to this type of problem, especially when you have a demand that's very unique to this area, that's pulling these residents. If that wasn't there, if the Walmart and the box stores and the grocery store wasn't there, people wouldn't cut through the neighborhood. But they are there. So what do we do to mitigate those effects? That is a significant effect that, yes, it doesn't meet the number of where the model goes. So technically, it's not a significant effect. But it is something that I think we should pay attention to more. And that's why I'm not going to support the project.
Thank you. Commissioners, look for a motion or any other further discussion?
All right, I guess I will make the motion to support staff recommendation to approve this project. Let's see, where is it? It's not, it's the same thing I had, the staff report. Well, I'll just kind of rattle off the consideration of development plan, D-20-0004, and density bonus plan, DB-22-0004, to allow this project, as well as the environmental report that went along with it, which I don't have, again, I don't have the staff report in front of me, so I can't. And to adopt Planning Commission Resolution, P-2022, P-29, certifying the Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment and adopting the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Ballmer. Second on that motion?
I'll second it.
And a second by Commissioner Custer. Any further discussion? Let's vote.
Chair Rosales, let the record show that the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Simons voting no.
Thank you.
Good job, Jeff.
Thank you. That then takes us to the appeal of city planners' determination. We have no items and no items under discussion. So we'll go to Commissioner Planner reports. I'll start. I don't have anything really to report. I had a question. Maybe it'll come back to me later. So Vice Chair Morrison's not here. Commissioner Ballmer?
I left on everybody's little place, this California Surf Museum's having their gala coming up. So just to let people know if they're interested, it's part of our surfing culture and heritage in Oceanside, and we're trying to fundraise to keep that museum going. So anyway, I just dropped that on everybody's desk. And also, just want to make a statement about traffic. I mean, it's like, we're asked in our city to build out every property that we have. We're asked to increase our housing element by SandAG. And so all that's going to increase our traffic. It's going to happen in every neighborhood that we have. It's going to happen on our freeways. It's going to happen everywhere. And that's kind of why, you know, maybe we have to change the way we look at how we travel. And that's kind of what they're forcing upon us. Maybe not in my generation, because I'm too old to like get on electric bikes and, or like take ride shares. But in the youthful kind of like place there is in the world, it's going to happen. I mean, they're not going to want to have a car. They're going to end up just calling an Uber and doing it that way. But it's going to happen, because once you force people to not be able to drive in a street anymore, they're going to change their paths. So we're kind of in a transition phase here. And it's hard to see this happening in every neighborhood, but it's happening in all of our neighborhoods. And so we have to be careful how we look at our circulation plans in our city. And when we start to eliminate, you know, Rancho Del Oro, you know, things that happened there, we eliminated an on-rep on the 76. I mean, there's things we eliminate. We take away bridges and connections. And all of a sudden, that just starts impacting everything. So we got to look at and be more visionary when it comes to our streets and not take away things that have been planned for the growth of our cities. And so that's just kind of, but traffic is inevitable. We can't, like in Fire Mountain, we can't exactly widen those streets. Those are neighborhoods. They don't want to get their streets widened and their front yards taken away. So now we have all this traffic that's going through. And the cut-through thing is bad. But it's like, hopefully, the traffic calming will help. I don't know. That's just, it's random.
Thank you. Commissioner Custer?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Dobbs? Nothing to report. And Commissioner Simons?
I would just say, having grown up in a neighborhood that was one of those where they developed and then it became a cut-through, the city went through and cut off the cut-through. That's all they're asking for, you know, is going through and eliminating that cut-through. So you can't, if you're a resident inside the neighborhood, you can go one direction or you can go the other, you can go, you know, in or out, or you can go into the different directions. But there are ways, and I've seen neighborhoods around here where you can eliminate that cutoff or really deter that cutoff. I think that's the kind of thing that we need to think about with these kind of projects and include it in the bundling of the thought of the project. I mean, the project is a great project for all the reasons that it was great. But that was just, my answer is, you know, let's, what can we do to kind of eliminate these, the osmotic pressure of cut-throughs as it goes through? So that's it.
City planner?
Thank you, Chairman Rosales. Just a quick update on some upcoming items before this commission. At our next meeting on October 24, there will be a conditional use permit for cannabis distribution business. This body will be asking to make a recommendation to city council on that permit. On November 7, there's a regular coastal permit for a remodel at 1235 South Pacific Street. And also, that evening will be presented zoning text amendment for inclusionary housing orders update. There's going to be a few amendments to the existing zoning ordinance to remove some language related to inclusionary housing, which will be housed in a different section of the municipal code. Moving out to city council on October 19, will be the appeal petitions will be considered by the city council for the Ocean Camp project. On November 2, there is going to be a, recently, the city had certified an update to our regulated use permits of relationship to tattoo establishments. And there was identified a need to update a segment of Article 12, which deals with downtown. This body doesn't really deal with that ordinance, but that's going to be considered by city council on November 2. And then finally, on December 7, the inclusionary housing ordinance that will come for this body will be considered by city council. We haven't set a date yet, but we also did receive an appeal of this body's decision to deny the Breeze project. So that will be scheduled probably for the end of the year. On October 12, there will be a city council workshop to appoint a new member to the planning commission to fill the vacancies, hopefully.
What's that date?
It's November 12, this Wednesday, at 2 o'clock here in this room. And then finally, a few meetings ago, Chair Rosales, you asked for an update on a project on Rancho Del Oro, just north of Vista Way. Looked into that a little bit. So it's an old project. It's known as Vista Pacific. This body approved that project back in May of 2009, believe it or not. And through a series of automatic extensions granted by the state and the city, that project's still alive. It had a final map recorded in 2018. Grading activity started on that site. They built some retaining walls. The developer ran into a few issues. Came the rainy season in 2020, and there were some violations of some water quality control board rules. The developer's been dealing with those issues since that time. My understanding from speaking to our city engineer today was that most of those issues that were deficient have been rectified. But moving on that site is fairly slow. In addition, they recently submitted building permit plans for their models. So the project is moving forward, but it's at a slow pace. But it's still getting inspected regularly by the city. So city's watching it.
Yeah, I'm curious if it's the same developer or not, because it seems like there was a redesign of the stormwater infrastructure. Because, yeah, two years ago or a year and a half ago, it was literally running down the street like a river. And then since then, they've made substantial, like I said, stormwater infrastructure improvements. So it almost, either they did a redesign and/or got more money or both. So I don't know.
So the city engineer shared with me, they did things a little backwards on that project. They started grading it and building retaining walls rather than installing the stormwater infrastructure first. And then they cowboyed in their own two detention basins temporarily to hold stormwater, which of course is not what you want to do.
Yeah. Okay, thank you for that update. All right, we stand adjourned until our next meeting.